All right, good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome everyone to the December 5th, 2022 City Council Work Session. I'd ask everyone to please turn off any electronic devices. And at this time, we'll recognize City Manager Craig Lennica to share some history and recognize Paramount Theater Director Dave Rock.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And as everybody knows, Dave recently retired with us. We appreciate Dave being here tonight. But Dave began his work at the City of Burlington on October 13th, 1997, and has provided 25-plus years of devoted service to the theater, our patrons and our community. He has been the only director since the theater opening and has shepherd the development of programming and operations. He has worked with all local theater groups and has made the Paramount a true community theater. He has also written 12 original plays that have been performed at the theater, and all these plays opening at the Paramount as well. Dave has been a member of the North Carolina Presenters Consortium, a professional organization for theater professionals. He has always been willing to go out of his way to be part of the greater city team. Ditching where he can, he has always gone above and beyond, not only for the theater, but for the city. For recruiting acts, coordinating with local groups, writing plays, acting, and even now reclaiming the theater meticulously, Dave really has done it all, and we are certain his legacy will carry on for years to come. And again, we want to wish Dave and his wife congratulations as they begin this new chapter in their lives.
Dave, you want to say a few words about? I will say, we recently, Kim and I recently went to a play at Paramount, it's a Celtic Christmas. And I think I recall you saying that it was nearly sold out for the first time in 19 months?
Since the pandemic, yes. And it's coming back next year, and I have tickets if anybody is...
It's not temporary, right?
City Manager asked me how I was enjoying retirement, and I said, I hate it, I want to come back. But it's been a real privilege to be here and to be a part of this thing. I remember the Sunday afternoon when Susan and I went to my mom and dad's house, my dad would read the Times News from the upper left-hand corner of the front page to the lower right-hand corner of the back page. He read everything. And he said, Dave, I see the City of Burlington is advertising for a director for the Paramount Theater, and I'm reasonably certain that I said thank you as I grabbed the paper out of his hand and ran out the front door to update my resume. Susan is the source of all my best ideas, as anybody connected with the theater will tell you, and she's been such a supporter. And I so appreciate the fact that she'll give up long hours to allow me to do the job. I appreciate the fact that two of the three best guys that I've ever worked for, Harold and Tony are here tonight. Got a member of Class of 69 at Williams here, appreciate Richard being here. And I just hope that you folks will continue to support the Paramount as you have. City government is good to us, and I think that the person who inherits this job and gets to work on the expansion and to work with my staff, which I'm sure is going to expand it, but a lot of what, if we've had any success, it's because of what they have contributed with their time and loyalty. I got two people, Lynn Gross and Carol Plouffe, that there 25 years, all 25 years, Joy York 22 years, and it's because of their love for the Paramount, and I hope that's going to continue. So again, I thank you so much for the opportunity, and y'all come see us. Susan will attest, the most common thing you hear among theater families is, I can't, I have rehearsal. And that's why these folks were kind enough to loop us up and get attended. And we've got rehearsal tonight, so we're going to take our leave.
Dave, thank you so much, and we appreciate the legacy that you brought to us and the stability that we have in the Paramount. So I'm sure we'll continue that training. The next item on our agenda is linked transit update. At this time, we'll recognize Interim Transit Manager John Endo and Director of Transportation, Mike Dunn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's a good time, it's getting towards the end of the year. As you know, we've been impacted by the pandemic and thought it would be an opportunity to update you on link transit. I slid a little teaser into your packet of the ridership, hope you have a chance to look at that. As like with all transit brokers around nation, we did have to dip during COVID, but I think our ridership has increased almost beyond the trajectory it was on before COVID hit. So we're going to report a little bit of last night, talk to you about some other procurement details, and then ask for your input at the end about a study that you'd like to do forward with us. So I'm going to let John, people call John Endo, has been our interim transit director, interim for about a year and a half. John helps us part-time, very thankful that he does that for about 20 hours a week. We still have a position available, but John did an excellent job for us, working out well, his knowledge and history, experience is well beyond what we probably could secure here right now, so I'm very thankful for that. From South Carolina to Texas to California and beyond, so he's very knowledgeable. So I want to turn it over to him, let him walk me through the presentation portion, discuss any questions you have there.
Okay. Top of the evening, everybody. Today, we're going to talk about link transit and give you an update of where we are today. So the overview that we'll be going over is our system update. We'll focus on history, routes, utilization, and ridership, our bus stop and bus shelter implementation plan, bus procurement and replacement, the Burlington Grand Metropolitan Planning Organization Regional Transit Study, the link transit development plan and facility study, and we'll answer any questions in the general discussion. So this is the link transit system. To give you a perspective, it primarily operates within the Burlington city limits, town of Gibsonville, unincorporated areas of Alamance County, out to Alamance Community College with five routes. The system started in June of 2016. In June of 2018, we expanded service to 8:00 PM on all five routes. On June of 2021, we went fare free, and then October of '21, we added Saturday service. The five routes all radiate from downtown Burlington, and they operate every 90 minutes. Weekday service is from 5:30 until 8:00 PM. Saturday service is from 9:30 to 6:00 PM. The dark areas around these routes are the is the complimentary ADA impaired transit service. It's a daughter of service for persons that have disabilities that cannot ride traditional fixed route transit or into a traditional fixed route bus stop. And in order to use the service, you have to go through an application process. Of the ridership trips, purple is the most utilized bus route in the system, followed by the red, followed by the orange, followed by the blue, and then lastly, the green. We have recently received a request from the town of Elon to evaluate a potential extension of the blue line into their town. They would have contributed funding if we were to make this extension work similar to what the town of Gibsonville contributes to the transit system. And we're doing that evaluation now. We anticipate that we will forward counsel in the future with an intermunicipal agreement to implement this proposed change, if it works out for both parties. So this is a nice graphic of our ridership. In 2016, we're about... 2016, we're about 48,034 passenger trips system-wide. We increased to 2017 to 85,807 passenger trips. 2018, 88,520. 2019, we peaked at 112,479. And as you know, we entered in the COVID-19 pandemic, which caused our ridership to drop to about 57,770, which did make some slight reductions to the transit system as well. Then in 2021, prior to fare free, we continued to increase to 70,013. And then we're projecting about 135,000, which will be the highest in link transits history. So even without going fare free, we're already on the trajectory of an increase in passenger trips. So the fare free has definitely allowed more of the transit users to make more trips on the transit system, demonstrating its effectiveness. For passenger amenities, we presently have 10 bus shelters throughout the link transit service area. We are working on adding an additional 25. We've identified locations in partnership with the Public Transportation Advisory Commission. It's based on ridership with the most passenger boarding that these proposed 25s found for one of the shelters. We're working on purchasing to finalize a contract with a turnkey vendor that would install the shelters for the cement and construct the shelters. And then we are utilizing our federal transit administration funds to pay for this project.
Will this be 53.07 funds or is it different?
It would be 53.07 dollars that we had allocated. It also includes some land work and the side work. Exciting times are coming at 23, where we're going to have a brand-new link transit fleet. We will own 10 vehicles when it's completed. Seven of those vehicles will be fixed route, which two of those vehicles will be 30-foot BYD electric buses, due to be delivered in June. We'll have five 28 RBOK gasoline-powered vehicles, which will be here in the fall of '23, and those are the same vehicles that we have today. And then for the paratransit side, we'll have three 24-foot RBOK gasoline-powered vans, also delivered in August or in the fall of '23. And this is a conceptual design of how the battery electric bus will look like, so it fits in with the link transit fleet. The Burlington Grand Metropolitan Planning Organization is responsible for coordinating transportation planning for the Burlington Grand Urbanized Area. The City of Burlington is the lead agency that facilitates the MPO, and they are working on implementing a regional transit study. The purpose of this study is to evaluate how all the transit systems in the urbanized area can operate more efficiently. If you look at the graphic on the right, you'll basically see five transit systems that operate within the urbanized area: link transit, Alamance County Transportation Authority, Go Triangle, Orange County Public Transportation, and the FEMA Authority for Rural Regional Transportation and Port Park. And the goal of this study is to also look at how can the funding be equitably distributed among the five operators, since we only get about $3.2 billion to the urbanized area here, and how we can eliminate duplication and facilitate coordination between the transit So that takes us to the link transit development plan and transit facility study. The last time a link transit was evaluated was about 2013, and that was basically giving guidance on to create link transit. So this plan will evaluate the overall performance of link transit, provide recommendations for future transit operations, identify sites for permanent transfer hub. This picture here on the right is a break into the present transit hub that we have in downtown. We'll identify sites for future transit operations and maintenance facility. We presently get our transit operations facility to our contractor, where they basically pay the lease of that facility. We'll former steering committee have a robust public outreach process to ensure that we get public outreach or public input for this plan. And then this plan will be funded by the FTA. And generally, when you have these plans completed, it helps in feeding information to the Metropolitan Planning Organization for future grant opportunities to fund the transit system. And then for the transit facility study, ensure that we do the proper equity analysis and site selection analysis to ultimately present a recommendation for this council to consider. So today, we're looking for consensus from the council to allow us to release the transit development plan and transit facility study requests for proposals. And this study will also feed in well with the MPO's regional transit studies. And Mike and I are happy to answer any questions if you have any.
What was the deciding factors to get it fare free?
We were looking at the revenue generated, and the revenue generated just wasn't worth the fare collection. And we're also looking at a way to reintroduce people to transit after the pandemic and remove a barrier from the low-income community so they can reinvest their, the money that they were paying to the transit system to like a brand shop and spend that in our service center.
So if I recall, we went fare free largely because it was not worth the collection efforts and the fare boxes and that sort of thing, that we would sort of take a look at it and evaluate it at some point in the future before we continue down that path. So would that be part of this study?
Yes, this study would definitely look at that. That's probably all right efficiency of the system.
Yeah, and that way, if there is a reason to reintroduce it, it might be different circumstances now, and we certainly now would be, or then would be the time to consider that.
That's right.
Any other questions? So you just need consensus to move forward the study?
Just want to make sure that you're aware of it, and it's a study, and we're okay to proceed with it. Or take about a year, so you guys study, and we'll be involved in updates too.
Okay. Let's do that. Yeah. So good, so we'll roll right on into item B, which is link transit Title VI program 2023, '22 through '25. We obviously have a public hearing scheduled for tomorrow, so you guys want to bring this up today or now?
All right, so the purpose of the public hearing tomorrow is to have the Burlington City Council authorize the Title VI program. And Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 protects people from discrimination based on race, color, and natural origin in programs that include receiving federal financial assistance. This program has to be created every three years, so this will be our second program that we dug for the transit system. The elements of the transit, the Title VI program includes a notice, how to file complaints, copies of the complaint form, a list of Title VI investigations, complaints, or lawsuits presented, none, a public participation plan on how we engage the public, a limited English proficiency plan on how we present information to those that have a limited English proficiency such as Spanish, a racial breakdown of our non-elected advisory council, that being the Public Transit Advisory Commission, a narrative of how we monitor the performance of the fixed route transit system, and ensure that we have amenities and services equitably distributed throughout the service area. And then lastly, the incorporation of a city council resolution or meeting for the approval. The program has been just placed on the city's website for 30 days. We added it available in our administrative offices, and as of today, we receive no public comments. Happy to answer any questions if they're ready.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, I think we're good. Thank you, I appreciate it, Mike. Next item, item C, is 2023 proposed fees and charges, schedule changes. At this time, we'll call the KDP.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have new packets, the fees that have been recommended for changes, the increases and decreases in immunity. We have all our department heads here who have those proposed changes, so we're primarily here. It will be on the consent agenda tomorrow night. Yes, we're scheduled to be on the consent agenda for tomorrow night, and we're here to not just answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for me?
Specific charges, especially new ones that are being requested, do you want to respond to those?
It depends on what question it is or it goes. I might turn it over to the respective department.
I'm worried, I don't think that's possible. I just might ask about some. There's a new charge for people playing tennis, and I asked how that would be a fenster, and it seems awkward to me to charge people playing tennis on a public course. The fee is $10, and how we collect that if there's not having somebody on the premises or online also eliminates some people from playing.
Yes, ma'am. Let me explain a little bit, and then maybe we can break it down a little bit. We don't charge every court all day or anything. This is prime time use, where we have a lot of demand from courts. We use a telephone app, and you can do it online too, called Court Reserve. They can reserve their court from their phone just to make sure that when they're coming to play, and then prime time is generally late afternoons, early evenings, and weekends, when people are not working, most of the people, and they can come and play tennis. So it assures them of having a court when they show up to play, so they don't have to wait. And we do have part-time staff there during our prime times. Our tenant, we have one full-time director there, Randy Scott, who oversees the tennis program. He has some part-time workers, mostly young students, and they can help administer, you know, collecting the fees, and also they can pay online too, if they have. We've never actually charged a tennis court use in recent years anyway, until this time. And I think Randy's putting it in because of the demand that, you know, that we're getting to the tennis courts now, so it's probably going to take a little transition time to, you know, make it work pretty good. And yes, I agree, there's not somebody there at the courts all the time when the courts are open, even at night. Lights are on timer, systems, they stay on for certain hours and then they go off, but that's for later night players. Anyway, we can always price them, if it doesn't work, then we can change it. I don't believe it's going to price anybody out of using playing tennis, because we have three courts in all areas of town. We have some on the east side of town, we have some on the west side of town, and of course, we have the tennis center right in the middle of town. So there's availability at tennis courts, just about anybody wants to play, and most of the times, it's first come, first served. We're only talking about prime time at the tennis center.
So you're not charging like at east side, west side?
We don't charge anything at the courts at Fairchild or Davidson Park.
And this is the first opportunity, right? That you've done this charging?
Yes, sir, it's the first time we've charged a court.
So if it wasn't, if it wasn't reserved, if someone hasn't gone, they're not going to have to reserve it, and then somebody just showed up, we're not going to ask them to leave?
No. And that's the way it is now, you know, I mean, you don't have to reserve a court. That's just, you know, that app is there for you so that you don't waste the time, you know, coming to play and then the court's all been full and you have to sit around and wait for somebody to stop. So it's a convenience thing too, so that you, you know, you don't waste time, you got to court reserve. So it's a convenience thing too, so that you, you know, you don't waste time, you got to court reserve, you show up and the court's ready to play.
What's the length of the reservation taken?
I think they get an hour, hour and a half.
Somebody could be on the court, and then you have reservation, you get kicked off, right?
Well, that's what our part-time staff is there to help, you know, administer that and everything. So I think most people for those prime time hours, they know that now that, you know, the regular tennis players that reserve a court's the best way to do it, so it's not something, and that, that system's been in place ever since. Randy took over at least two years, two to three years, so this is working well, we haven't had any complaints about that.
The reservation system?
Reservation system, yes, sir.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you.
Any other questions on tennis?
One other question for the planning department, Jamie, I wonder if we have the appropriateness? Seems like our timing went off on talking about it.
Yeah, we, we discussed that, so we, at this point, we have not included a fee for minor COAs. We felt that because the standards are new, and we want to encourage property owners and applicants to do modifications, upgrades, that that would be something we would want to hold off till at least a year until the standards are in place. The major COAs are items that we have to actually notice. We send letters out to property owners, so there's time and effort spent, similar to some of our other applications that we charge for fees. So we felt like this was something that we wanted to suggest and recommend at this point. As you know, with the change of the standards, many of the items that were major COAs have now become minor or even administrative. So we're pushing in that direction, so we're not, we're hoping to, you know, have less majors, but we do, we haven't charged for any applications historically. And there's a lot of time spent, a lot of research done, a lot of staff time, similar to your resoning applications where you see the packets of the staff records and all of the maps and all of the efforts that go into it. Same thing gets done with COAs, so.
How many, how many of those major COAs do we typically see on month security?
In a month's period?
Yeah, it doesn't seem to be that many.
There is, and I would say with the new standards, it'll be different than in the past. So, and we're having people, you know, now catching up to over probably holiday time, new time where they were holding off on work. So I know, I would say about two, maybe, two to three, that's probably the max.
In a month?
Sometimes less. Very rarely we've had to cancel meetings, but again, this is all based on the old standards. So we'll know more in about a year, I would think, on how that, those changes have come into place.
Any other questions on cities, Kathy, do you have any?
You know, when we add fees like these, I remember a few years ago when we added fire inspection. And that seemed well good, we were sitting in here, but it didn't go over well. So I think it's important that if we add these fees and staff sees that there's some consternation, we're not going to always get a phone call, but if we need to make an adjustment to something, we need to do it before it gets to a point that people are irritated.
If I could just bring something up, and not overreacting, but actually, I had a colleague at the Raleigh Crystal Parade and literally standing adjacent to where the accident occurred and, you know, and her back here. And this is not trying to play screw, it's your, but over the years, I've contracted federal floats that come with drivers included.
Yes, sir.
That's exactly what happened in this situation too. Unfortunately, in this situation, this person had had in the area 15 to 20 driving issues, and still have their license. So not again to say that that would happen again, but I think we need to take a hard look at that particular policy in terms of not only how we line parade up with children, or anybody walking, but I mean, we're walking groups and just in front of power-driven vehicles. And if you've seen the replay of that on channel near the triangle TV stations, you literally saw citizens coming off the sidewalk, getting in front of the truck and trying to pull the truck. And I can only imagine the repercussions of what's going to come out of this in terms of that whole situation. I believe next year, they can make a harder look at that, Tony. This professional float thing has always been sort of a touchy situation.
Yes, sir. The, we've, we've been renting our floats from client floats, they're up in Hickory area, right outside of Hickory. They actually build the floats, they contract with private drivers. And the driver not only drives the float, or the vehicle that's pulling the float, they furnish the vehicle that's pulling the float. So they take these floats home wherever they live, and then they, when they have a parade, you know, they drive from their home to where that parade site is. That's why we didn't have a parade float, not this year, but last year for the city council, because we were.
I'm bringing that up.
But anyway, the driver that was contracted to drive that float, whatever happened, I don't know, couldn't make it, and so that float didn't get here. But anyway, that's how that worked, and I'm really, very, I've been doing, I think, I started my first parade in 1968, so this was like '54, '55, something like that. And so, yes, it's, it's a lot of chaos, it's a lot of people being pulled into an area together, walking units, vans, vehicles, both the professional floating vehicles and also the non-professionals who were just local people that put something together or drive a vehicle or whatever. So, and, and the, and the speed of the parade has always slipped. I really, it took me a while to wrap around how somebody, a vehicle could run into a group in front of them, but, you know, I know there was some, something about mechanical issues with the vehicle that the person was driving. But we try to keep the units 50 feet apart, that's what we tell everybody, you know, stay 50 feet back from the group in front of, whatever it is. And unfortunately, we're getting sprung out. If you've looked at the TV broadcasts on Channel 5 of this year's parade, you'll see some lapses, you know, where you got a unit and then way down the street, here comes somebody, you know, that's gotten behind. We have a lot of walking units with a lot of smaller kids, but it takes them, they slow down a lot, and, you know, but we, we have police that's going along all the time trying to keep the parade together and making sure it's safe. But it, it is, you know, knock on wood, we've never had an accident here or any injuries, as I know of in the parade since I've been doing it, and it's really unfortunate what happened wrong. We never want that to happen here or anywhere else, so we'll do our best to make sure that, you know, professional floats are being rented, they are having responsible drivers and, and vehicles pulling, pulling the units. And the units that they, they, they go on the highway with these, you know, they, they pull these professional floats up and stuff. Those units, those vehicles pulling them, whether it's SUV or pickup truck or whatever, they, they have to have a lot of speed, you know, to go from different place to different place. But we'll, we'll work with clients to make sure that they check everybody out before we get a float.
Is it possible, Tony, to do a background check on all the drivers?
I guess it would be if we could get a list of the drivers from all, from clients.
I said, get the driver's names and the fans?
Now, we, I'm, I'm, I don't know why they wouldn't burn it, too, but we certainly would, and can ask for it.
It could be as simple as just having clients provide their DMV record and, and a notice that their vehicle has a current state inspection.
That's right.
That's right.
Absolutely. Yeah, terrible analogy, this, some of us could go back to the movie Animal House and brave home companies.
Roll, roll of the hat.
If you remember that movie, it was too good. But, you know, when the float, when it came out, the float, we got it across the street. Yeah, the situation is, what I saw the clip was, this particular vehicle was a big pickup. And it appeared to me that it just picked up speed almost.
It was going downhill, it was on a downhill, and when you're pulling a heavy load, and you don't have, and your brakes go out.
Well, any, any driver in teacher would tell you, put it in neutral, put the emergency brake on the stop.
That's what I figured out, why, why do you use an emergency brake?
Or you could, if you didn't want to do that, you could throw it in park and it wouldn't stop.
A sudden, they leave us up.
Well, I think that would be a good step to have those two things add, if we could do that. Any, anything else with fees?
This is different, I'm going back to the fees now. I'm just wondering where the breakpoint is. I know that we want the people who are using the work that we're doing to be the people who pay for it, but I'm just wondering where the breakpoint is. It's a philosophical question, really, people are paying taxes and we have facilities for them. And just how many things do we charge for? At what point will the public say this is, this isn't right?
Kathy, honestly, the Burlington really are involved, the legal platform in the Lake Sevens has been one of the first communities that went to a fee structure. And the reason was because as the demand for parks and recreation grew, the cost of facilities and the cost of operations was offset some of the expenses. The structure was designed to be, not to be gross on anyone. We did not put scholarships involved, because we were not in a position to determine who deserves scholarship. Everybody needs to hold up bureaucracy to figure that out. So the fee structure was never, I'd say, over to the bar.
Quite a few removals.
Yes, a lot of removals, there's been some things that have been changed. This thing with the tennis, if it's, if it's prime time that what Tony is referring to, I, I can see that, literally at prime time, because most of the people that's going to want to play, that's not during that time, a lot of them are kids that get out there at any point in time. And, you know, the fee structure, if you pay classes, obviously, there's a fee there, but the instructor has to be paid. Lenable facilities or has it been involved now for about 50 years? So I, I think it's, we kept it at a level, at, at one point in time, our fees, actual fees recognized was as high as almost at least 38% of our operational costs. And now it's much less than that, much less.
Still over 30%, but not quite as high as it used to be. The way I like to explain the fees and charges is, they're user fees. Now, everybody in the city doesn't use all the recreation facilities, so those ones that are using them, they're paying a fee, hopefully a affordable fee, and we don't try to raise our fees where it prices any money out, but they're paying an affordable fee to help maintain and keep up those facilities because they're using them. So it's a little fairer to the taxpayer who's not using that facility, or some taxpayers who don't use any, any facilities, you know, that they're not having to bear the whole cost of the recreation and parks system. So, so they're user fees, which I think are fair, because, you know, if you're going out to play tennis, or if you're going to the golf course, or if you're going to the aquatic center, you know, you're paying a little bit to help furnish those facilities and keep them in operation.
I'm not opposed to user fees, I think that is a very good way for us to go on, for us set a percentage of the cost to us. I'm just saying, I think we should pay attention carefully to where the fund goes where we want to follow.
I'm mistaken, this flash pad from the facility, the original agreement, was in terms of who got paid the capital cost, they did not get the fee of that facility, like.
It's still free, the, the main donor on that facility that paid for half the cost, they, they wanted it to be free, so anybody that comes and uses it individually, family-wise or whatever, they don't pay a fee. The only people that pay a fee at the splash park are the ones that rent the facility for a private function.
Any other questions, please?
And one, one thing Rachel probably remembers, I want to. We had a couple, a study done a couple of years ago about the IP's and charges, and we came up with a pyramid at, you know, where the base of the pyramid is for low-cost or free activities. And then as you came up to the top, the premium facilities or whatever, more, more cost. So that we, we tried to, you know, to put our programs and facilities into this pyramid where, you know, we, it would be fair for everybody that lives in the city or whatever, they want to participate, you know, the cost was plateaued, so this, you know, if you wanted to go to the golf course, you're going to pay a little bit more than if you wanted to go and swim, swimming.
Thank you, Tony, I appreciate that. Our next item, we actually have an add-on, it's not on your agenda, I know, I think, on video, Michael, Captain David Mitchell with Good Office is concerning the resolution that they're trying to get to assist with financing. I want to turn it over to David, our city attorney, and let David give a little background on it.
Sure, Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you. Following you, we recognize Mr. Mitchell had previously appeared before you on November 1 of this year for a public hearing and a rezoning of the Maple Avenue, or excuse me, Maple Hotel property at 244 Thor Maple Avenue. And he is the president of the developer in this instance, good known as company. Following that rezoning, I believe he made contact with you, Mr. Mayor.
He did.
And you in turn referred it to me, and I have been working with Mr. Mitchell and legal counsel Charles Chaz Cordell of the Oryx Law Firm in San Francisco, California, over the last two weeks, trying to come up with a resolution regarding this tax-exempt bonds that they are proposing to use to finance this project. Mr. Cordell's not a witness to this, but his small partner Kathleen is, Kathleen Chang is with us. And Kathleen, can you hear us here?
Yeah, I can hear everyone right now.
And I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Mitchell, as well as this Chang to turn around and explain to you what the resolution pertains to, as well as explain the concept. And I'll be able to fill in any lines on what we've done here in act.
Good evening, good to see you all again, and thank you again for your time. And I was talking to my partner and attorney, David Hublin. You know, you're working with the state of Wisconsin and the public finance authority to, in essence, finance a series of projects, 14 different projects around the country, and one offering is a tax, with a tax incentive offering done through the state of Wisconsin and the public finance authority, and Kathleen will explain the details of it. It does not really require anything, the city approached, the city approached obligated on these bonds. What it, what it would, it will constantly, state regulations require is that the municipalities that have the properties that are being financed through this offering doesn't recognize and quote-unquote, soft, were approved for financing of these bonds and approaching. and quote-unquote, soft, were approved for financing of these bonds and proceeds and pro-rata proceeds to be used for the conversion of this property of Maple to residential. And it's, so the resolution really has that in it. They also request that it require a, that the city appoint a, an individual either from government of the city of Burlington, or, or somebody who's not a government employee, but is familiar with housing, to sit on the advisory board, or, or, um, for this issues. Again, this person, it doesn't have any liability, if he sits on the advisory board, they're really to represent, if you will, his, the views of, of housing. And it, um, it, the, the term for this is TFR. It is done quite often. What it allows us to do is, in essence, access the municipal bond market where rates are favorable, as we all know, interest rates have all doubled from last year. And, and so this accomplishes many things for the city of Burlington. It assures funding, ensures that the city will be getting this type of housing, and, and, and the funding, the funding thereof. So that's at the macro, Kathy's here to assist me with all the details that I might not said, and also to explain any technical, I can take any macro questions, and I can go down from there.
I've got one question for David. Huffman, when I first talked to Mr. Mitchell about this, it sounded to me like it was similar to what we did at Burlington. Is that?
It has some elements to it that are like that, but there's, there's some things that are different about it. Furthermore, I, I did provide you with some correspondence I had with Mr. Cordell earlier, and there were some aspects of it, including what Mr. Mitchell just referred to, someone appointed by either you or one of you to serve on some sort of board, operations board, advisory board. You and I had this conversation, I don't know that I advised him, because I believe this is, you're strictly here for the approval of the bonds, and I think you're there simply, you're, you're required to approve the bonds simply because it's being built in your jurisdiction for purposes of notification. You will see that the provisions of the draft resolution, I have tried to add any things in there that make that clear, that we are not obligated, either on the bonds themselves, or for any operations involved, or even into the future, which there was a provision in, or a paragraph in Mr. Cordell's, Cordell's email pertaining to the city either getting ownership of it, or the proceeds from the sale of this property at the end of the bonds period. And I wasn't familiar with that, I'm still not familiar with that, but I understand that's really not part of the legal obligations here whatsoever. In fact, there are no legal obligations, as I understand it to be, on the part of the city, except just to acknowledge that, that you're, we're aware of the project, it's going to be in our jurisdiction, but we are not obligated in any way. And that, that is similar to exactly what Burlington Housing, you're correct, what that project was about.
That's correct, and you know, the, it's more, I mean, I don't wanna minimize the, the city council's approval, but in a way, it's more recognition, not approving the bond issues. And I think you're more approving the bond, the monies, the proceeds for the bond issuance being used, recognizing usage in the city of Burlington.
And you're advising that we not have an advisor on them?
I'm not here.
Yes, I did advise it, I would not, I would not, certainly would not ask that one of you serve on any sort of advisory board, okay? Because I think that muddies the water. Any questions, if, if they're gonna be given advice on operations or anything pertaining to the finance, I think that muddies the water.
It could be a compliment, that could be a compliment.
Certainly.
It's more, I mean, Kathy can speak to this, but it's more from an IRS recognition point of view, that the advisor is, is in essence, under advisory board, managing the property, they're not operating the property, they're not doing, they, they have no weighty as far as the control, the disposition of the property. I think what the, what the service, the, the tax free law wants is, in essence, some sort of representational action that, that says, you know, the city wants a cognizant of this money coming into the community of it. And that the issuer is the State of Wisconsin, the Public Finance Authority. But Kathy, you can, you know, you could elaborate on that.
So, um, so there is a nonprofit organization that will be, I'm trying to think, building and funding the project. And as David mentioned, there, it is very clear to the IRS that there's a positive relationship with the city, between the nonprofit organization and the city. And so that's why there is the idea of having an advisory board with some basement city on it.
I don't believe my advice is, what would be new?
Is what?
I don't believe I would change my advice to a non-pleasantries transaction of what we have here publicly.
So where does that leave us? So, so does that mean, does that mean, would we have to appoint this person, or could they actively just recruit someone?
They, they want, they want somebody, they could actively do that, that would be fine, too.
We could, we, could we provide them a list of some potential interested parties that they could contact?
That would be fine, that would be fine, but, um, the, the truth, my, is what this is here for tonight is simply asking you to set a, a, a public hearing for January the third, that you could hear the resolution.
Is resolution or not an agreement?
It's mine.
It's a resolution?
Yes, it's not, it's not an agreement of any sort, it's, it's just simply a resolution, resolution. And I spoke with Mr. Cordell earlier today, he had some other wherewithal's that he would like to stick in, handle a resolution. Then we may look at those, but I wasn't in a position to agree to what that they reflected earlier today. And I think what you've got in front of you is, as I hinted you just this evening, would be, otherwise it's gonna be what you're gonna be acting on, January third, if you choose.
Some, some portion of this is still, you guys are still working.
It, it, I, I would say that the marked-up version there with the red writing in it is, is it, until, until the last.
I, I, this, this is an aside, I mean, the city of Fayetteville is, is a point, is designated that the Cumberland County Fayetteville Economic Development Board, you know, appoints somebody. So the city, you know, went to its, you know, quasi, you know, private government organization, and put the obligation on them to find, to find someone to sit on that advisory board.
Okay, that's two separate pieces.
Correct.
So, so the resolution would be on the agenda for January, the first meeting in January?
Sure, we're down to bar lights on the consent agenda, disseminate the public hearing if you, if you choose to. And then it'll be on for the public hearing, we'll do all the advertising as required.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have, I have one question, Mayor. You talked about it earlier, David, is that at the end of this project, at the end of the bond payback, then the question of, you know, turning it over, one of the options was to turn it over to the city.
Yes, yes.
I, I don't know that we, like I said, that's down the road, but I don't know that we would want, I, I don't know that necessarily need to do that today or not, but I wouldn't want us to accept, you know, a third-party beneficiary role here. I hope that this resolution wouldn't be interpreted as accepting that.
And you can see that some of the language I added and read today actually basically loses the fact that we're not talking about obligating you, or currently, or in the future, to any obligation to take ownership of any ownership interest in it, or operations, or any of that. So that will be something that, these thirty-year bonds, I believe, say twenty-five, thirty-year bonds.
Okay. So is everybody good with the, with the day of public hearing? Two more. Okay, well, I handled that, thank you, Mr. Mitchell, we appreciate you being with us this evening.
Well, thank you, and I look forward to tuning in tomorrow, so this is on your agenda.
All right, sounds good, thank you.
Thank you, I'm, so I'm just gonna disconnect myself, correct?
You're, you're more than welcome to, unless you wanna hear the rest of our stuff.
I'll choose you.
All right, y'all have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Chang.
Um, next item, item D is boards and commissions report, do we have any? Sure, we have this. Um, and our final item is item E, city manager's report, just time we'll break it, as our city manager, Mr. Trump.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel. Did want to mention our carousel Christmas that we have scheduled for December twenty-second at four thirty. And we're very excited about that opportunity. A lot of moving parts still, there, the staff, it's, it's just been an exceptional job trying to coordinate between Morgan, and Nolan, and Tony, and everybody, and public workers. Morgan, did you kinda wanna give overview?
Sure, yeah, so the event itself starts at five P M, the public event, and so we've met, and we're gonna put together a program at four thirty that will include a dedication, some, some speaking opportunities for council members, if they would like to do that. So currently, we're putting together an invitation list to invite some of the special folks that have been involved in the project, and we wanna make sure we thank those folks during that ceremony. And then we'll hopefully have the opportunity to kind of have the ceremonial first ride that evening. So we'd love to put that on your calendars and ask you to join us for that. So it should be a really, a really memorable evening, we're gonna have some, some design giveaways for the community as well that night to really celebrate and thank them for their patience as we've worked through this project session.
And that's December twenty-second, right?
Correct.
I think Morgan's better than, than we'll have it then, and as long as everything works out and we get the ride for him, people can ride that night. So that's what we're working for, quickly and expediently as we can.
This response is good news for you, Nolan, about you.
Yes, it is.
It's, uh, yeah.
Just wanna make sure we get a little public breakfast.
Otherwise Nolan was just gonna push you along.
And we're.
I'm trying to hear a little David in that somehow.
We're prepared that evening, if by chance we do not have an honorable ride, which we don't think that's gonna happen, to have, to have the carousel of the folks to see it, it's impressive even, just to see the beauty of it up close. So, the event will, will go on and, and we'll dedicate it, and hopefully look forward to a good evening.
It can be pushed.
We can, it can.
It can be pushed.
Absolutely. It's already been pushed, the people in the stall, it can be pushed, yeah.
Um, but again, I'm just very impressed at the work this department's put in here, it's a great, a lot of work, a lot of coordination. Appreciate that Nolan really, I think he had three meetings today about the carousel, so thank you for his work on that. The next, I do wanna recognize Police Chief Brian Long to share the retirement news of Assistant Chief Chris Gass.
Mr. Mayor, your name and counsel? Just wanted to take a couple of minutes of your time tonight, Chief Gass couldn't be with us tonight, he's traveling back to, he's heading back to work tomorrow. But good to be in the night, but I didn't wanna miss an opportunity before he retired, really just to recognize his years of service. So, I don't wanna give his age exactly, but he started, well, he was born about six or seven years after Tony did his first parade. He's been, he's been with the police department now twenty-eight years, he started as a young patrol officer. His, the date that he joined the police department, I know it by heart because it's the same day that I joined, which has been an honor to serve with him side by side for all these years. I think you know him pretty well, at this point, his focus was on safety and traffic safety in the formative years of his service. We heard about Dave Wright earlier, writing twelve plays, and I think Chief Gass has written several thousand citations, so they're both writers in the way. But he, he certainly progressed in his career, he did his ten C I D in the late two thousands, he attended the National FBI Academy, and I believe that was twenty seventeen, graduated from class two seventy-one of that. And then he's just continued to truly be a committed employee, dedicated to the city of Burlington, has never wavered, and I just wanna take an opportunity publicly to thank him for his service.
Thank you. Next, we do wanna recognize our city chair and grounds superintendent, Alan Idol, and appearance commission representative, Luke Wells, to share a few words on the recent passing of board member Meredith Smith.
If we have Jim Parsons.
This couldn't be here, so I'm standing in for, this is Alan Idol. He, he's taken my place after many years with the city of Burlington and working with the tree and appearance commission. Well, I've been there for twenty-seven years, and we have some news we wanna share and make you aware of, and we thank you for giving us an opportunity to be here and share. We have, we want to share with you a loss that we will, will all suffer within the city. Alan would like to bring you up to date.
So we'd like to take just a few minutes, few minutes to recognize the service of Meredith Smith. She passed away last week unexpectedly, leaving a husband and two young children. She was appointed to our commission last June, and while her time was short, her impact will be long-lasting. She was vital to planning of our, and execution of our Arbor Day celebration, which we had back in October. This year's event was a huge success, thanks to her and our other members. Meredith was one who had a servant's heart. She applied to be on several different commissions within the city, but only requested to be placed where the greatest need. Fortunately, that was with us on the tree and appearance commission. Meredith had a desire to make Burlington a better place. I'd like to read you a quote from her application that shows her commitment to this community. "I'm looking forward to a way to get back to the community and to be involved in some of the future planning efforts. My hope is that by me getting involved, I can, I can have more of my friends and generation involved in an effort to make Burlington an even better community for our children to grow up in." So on behalf of the tree and parents commission, we would like to thank Meredith for her service, and thank her family for sharing her times with us, and we would like for them to know that they're in our thoughts and prayers. So thank you for your time.
I've talked with, we haven't had a council, we haven't had a commission meeting, obviously, since that time, but in our next council meeting, we're gonna bring it up, we wanna do something for Meredith's family in an honor of Meredith. And I can't think of anything better than for our commission to plant a tree, a special tree, in her honor, for her family to watch and grow. I talked with Red Davis of New Leaf, and he's mentioned that as the carousel facility gets open, New Leaf is, is open to donating and planting trees around the carousel. And I can't think of a better place to plant a tree in her honor than at the carousel. So we'll bring that up, and bring that to New Leaf and to the commission meeting, and you can rest assured we're gonna do our best to do something good for her.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I'm not mistaken, you guys was there at Arbor Day, she was the young lady that was very energetic, was she not?
Right, she was up at the top steps and.
Yes.
Yes.
Wow.
We're, we're in shock, we really are in shock, um, if you can describe it any other way.